Called to order.
It's my Aunt Linda.
Shut up, Justin. I'll put it on mute.
You tell them, Aunt Linda, we're not taking any of that.
That's hilarious.
Okay, I wasn't sure which clock to go by, but I'll go by that one. Uh, okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is our work session for the month of April. Uh, for people that haven't been here before, uh, this is our vote, our discussion meeting where we discuss possible agenda items that'll be, uh, voted on at next Wednesday's meeting. Uh, there's no roll call. This agenda is actually sort of set up for a voting meeting, but we use the same one, so we skip past the roll call. Um, Item C, action on the committee of whole. Next week's two, yeah. Uh, recognition of guests, I passed that. Recognition of meetings, we'll read that off next week. We'll also do the pride and promises. We'll be at the voting meeting next Wednesday. Nutrition Incorporated, item B. We have a presentation.
Uh, but as we were looking at the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, it was promising, then we were looking at the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. I felt like while I was writing those, it was a little like being on one of those amusement park rides, uh, like the rock tower one, where you're sitting in the cage, you're like all strapped in, your heart racing, you're waiting for the bottom to fall. Because when we wrote twenty-two, twenty-three, we were going back to a full meal eligibility program for Laurel, which meant kids were gonna go back to paying for meals based on meal eligibility. And that did mean a lot of challenges with our participation. And then on top of that, we were really looking at a large influx from the standpoint of a lot of inflation and a lot of supply disruption. So as we looked at twenty-three, twenty-four, I just, along the way, I'm going to share with you a little bit of where we were, where we are now, and where we're headed. So if you look at the first, uh, graph page in your packet there, it says average daily participation. You can see that when we wrote twenty-two, twenty-three, we were really expecting a large decline in participation. But thankfully, the, the staff here at Laurel has done an amazing job making sure kids are getting fed, and the numbers have been much better. So we can see breakfast, lunch, and all of our children are much higher than what we anticipated. When we wrote twenty-three, twenty-four, we used our average daily participation numbers in order to project what we did expect for next year. There's one caveat that is breakfast. We had used September's average daily participation, because that's the only month that Laurel students ate for breakfast. In October, Governor Walz signed into, um, act the universal breakfast program, and that is set to expire at the end of the year. So we don't know for sure that it's gonna carry into next year, so we did conservatively estimate breakfast based on that first month of this full year. That's, uh, worth about fifteen meals a day. So if that happens, if any of our revenue for both budgets, uh, state budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, that that happens, it's a nice little bump in what we can expect from revenue. So we can help with that goes through for another year. On the following slide, you're gonna see a chart for reimbursement. You can see back in twenty-one, twenty-two, you're getting quite a hefty reimbursement. That's every single meal that we serve with a hundred and fifty dollars to pay out reimbursement. When we looked at twenty-two, twenty-three, that was all being taken away. You're looking at paid free and reduced reimbursement. There's a big difference between what you get for a paid meal and what you get for a free meal. So that's why we saw such a drastic change. I also put in there where we're projected to be for this full year. You can see it's a little bit higher than what we had budgeted, and that's because we are serving more meals. And because of, of the free breakfast program, which is great. And then additionally on that is the increase that we saw this year. Typically, we see an increase of about two hundred and eighty-eight percent increase in reimbursement this year. This year, it went seventeen and a half percent. So a huge decrease in reimbursement rate this year. And part of that is linked to the kids fed acts, which is an additional forty cents for lunch and fifteen cents for breakfast. And it's also set to expire at the end of this full year. Uh, and so we don't really know where we're gonna be as far as reimbursement for next year. We are currently collecting documents from the state, so we're hopeful that we're gonna keep that initial reimbursement. But it doesn't look like we're gonna get a whole lot more than that. So we kind of kept it conservative and stuck with where we're at right now. We didn't do add any kind of increase going to here about this. The, um, fifteen cents and forty cents just to kind of give you an idea of what that's worth. It would be roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. Bottom line, if that doesn't work for next year. Any questions so far? Great. And as you can see on the following slide, I gave you a quick little recap. Our revenue is based on average daily participation for this current school year, projected out with fifteen in enrollment for next year. We did a budget based on the minimum number of serving days, and that's because you guys do have those classes today still in your calendar, and that means we're expecting those days. We wanted to make sure, uh, if that happens, we have a really good idea of what that impact would be. And then we also included a free K program that you have running right now. It's about fourteen thousand dollars. On the flip side, we have expenses. And just to kind of give you a picture, I gave you what sort of increase we've seen in food cost expenses the four years prior to COVID and then the four years since COVID. So three and a half percent is roughly what we saw corporate-wise the four years prior to COVID, and then nineteen percent is beyond that of COVID. We've seen a seven percent rise in food cost expenses year on. So it really has hit us hard, and I'm sure you're all seeing that in the grocery stores when you go, uh, try to buy a gallon of milk. So it's hitting everywhere. We do everything we can to control costs. But on the following slide, you can see some really common foods, really popular foods that kids eat and what we've seen as far as price increase over the past four years. So peaches is always the one I refer to. Peaches used to be eight, like, thirty dollars a case for us. To buy a case of canned peaches, it's fifty-six dollars to buy a case of canned peaches right now, which is just insane. Uh, and so we continually look at prices for all kinds of things. We have stopped buying canned peaches, and it resorted to other fruits, uh, that the kids love probably even more, um, but are at a better price point. We can really monitor that and make sure we're spending more money as fast as we can. So overall, food costs, we put in a ten percent increase in food costs and an eight percent rise in paper and cleaning costs. That's what we expect to see next year. We're gonna do everything we possibly can to make sure that's. One of the things that we really watch is sarcom trades. The kids using the line, because those are one thing we're struggling to keep the cost of line. So, uh, Carrie Boniak, your food service director, and I take a really quick look at why are we using them? Or can we replace them with something that's more economically sound, uh, and also better to be required? The other thing is, is labor costs go up every single year, you know, like, expect a little bit of a raise in order to come back to work in, in the fall. That's about a four percent increase in that. And then our fees that, um, in where the manager has now, we go over to CCI every year, which is six and a half percent.
I did have one question on labor costs. I mean, we have a lot of turnover. Is that something that eventually, I mean, that would need to be hired to keep enough people, or do we have enough people right now?
I think I understand your question. You're asking does the wage need to go up in order to reach for a change?
Right. And, yeah, do we have enough people at the four percent?
Carrie tried really hard to keep, uh, to keep us staff. She works really hard on it. It is a struggle, uh, to hire at that current starting wage, and you're not alone. The other area schools, Titanic, Lawrence County, and Indian are also under my management, and they're in the same boat. And they have chosen to increase their wage by a small amount to try to be more competitive with places like Sheetz and Walmart and where else. Uh, but I know you guys aren't in a, in the situation where you can just, you know, snap your fingers and make it happen if you want to. If you could, it would definitely help. At least with the recruiting fees. I think the people that you have here have been here a really long time, and they, they have found the, the love and joy of serving kids to lunch. And they're not going anywhere, hopefully. Uh, I know they may be needing to make some money, but they're getting in the rock for something about seven hundred dollars.
Okay, well, I was just curious, because we have a lot of trouble in other areas too, competing with Sheetz. But then again, who wants to work Sheetz hours? So that's, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we always try and sell that, you know.
Right.
Yeah, summers off, yeah, all those things. So far, I think Carrie's done a pretty good job. She has.
Oh, absolutely. Mm-hmm.
So if you look at the, the chart on the second to last slide there, it gives you a brief look at what the twenty-two, twenty-three budget was, what the twenty-three, twenty-four budget was, or is, I should say, and what the difference is. And you can see that we're gonna land in a much better place, and a large part of that is due to the, the number of meals that we expect to serve. And even that, like you said, is very conservative, so you can't really expect it to have a higher return than this might become for us this year. One of the things we're gonna do is, you know, Carrie does a great job applying for grants and doing a great job, you know, running the program, and so we're able to purchase what we call the Italian E-Show Line. And thanks to this lovely gentleman, it is installed and hooked up and ready to rock and roll. We're just working on finding details as to how to operate, uh, the conveyor people team, and how to staff it. And I think that'll be a big seller in our high school, so hopefully we'll see some, some even more, um, lunch participation at that level. They started secondhand breakfast at our high school, which allows our high school students to get breakfast during their first period, which gives them more time to get in and get, get that thing here. We know some high schools are slow to get out of bed, so if they start it, it's just another opportunity for them. Carrie also added a third lunch option at the elementary school for some of our older kids, and that's who we're really taking off and making an improvement in their annual participation. And Carrie's always watching progress. She does a fabulous job. So I think, you know, with all of her hard work and all of the wonderful people being behind us, we have a really good plan for coming through. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Katie.
I love this state, they're expecting tornadoes. He says, what's the weatherman make it sound like, though? Probably a sprinkle.
I, I did have one more question. Um, do predict any price increases in lunches, or are you the one to ask that too?
That's up to you, Michael. I would suggest that you, now you're fairly low as far as, you know, what a price to be for a breakfast. For us to serve a breakfast at a dollar, you're very. And so I would suggest that evening season breakfast is probably a small and big one as well for that paid level.
Right.
And then still from there. Dan and I also talked, we have a free K program. They get it decently, or they pay to the prices there. It's really not a whole lot there to get from them. It's probably from these students.
I figured with the pricing, the food going up eventually.
We had also the expectation that we always work towards covering the price of meals in a federal expectation.
Correct. Yeah, the paid lunch equity, uh, calcule later will tell us, you know, if we do have to, and how much, typically, uh, more than what we want to cover, but.
So I know some lunches cost more, some lunches cost less than, and the thirty, and twenty day school month will be the average cost of a meal.
No, let me see if I understand your question. You're asking, uh.
What does lunch cost you to put out? Like, you said breakfast was barely covered. What does lunch cost?
Lunch cost, you know, so it's cost us roughly, and this is just food, this isn't food, anything else, but they take all of these components, and so the dollar says we're sick. We have to take the, take the mouse. They don't take all of their food to vegetables. So that helps a little bit.
What, um, when we, when, when is our contract up with nutrition? When do we renew that? That's. So is there any wiggle room for at all? Like, I know we have to be, you know, in compliance with the, the government. Um, but is there any wiggle room at all to source, like, a percentage at all of, like, locally sourced food? Like, um, like when we had, like, we had COVID, one, one, one meal, the kids were allowed Auguste pizza. You know, I heard about it for a year. So, you know, I just, I didn't know, like, ob- obviously, the contract we're in is the contract we're in, but is that something that can be negotiated, that a percentage? And obviously, you know, there's, we're negotiating with Nutrition Inc. and negotiating against ourselves with the government, you know, because we have to be in compliance with some kind of subsection three, four, zero, niner, you know, but, but is, is, do you guys have that at any of your other schools where they are allowed a certain percentages of bring something locally sourced on, like, a Friday once a month or something like that?
Yeah, we've done, so fruits and vegetables are really easy for us to locally source. We can usually, you know, both. I think currently choose not to vary produce. There's a lot of locally sourced produce, but I can verify that with her for you. And then we can always look at some of the area restaurants and see how we can partner with them as far as that goes. The regulations make it tough, and they're getting harder and harder this coming school year. The programs have gone up, sodium's gone, you know.
So what happens? So let's say that, we, we say, you know, we come into a negotiation and we say, what is the negative? So one, one Friday a month, we say, okay, we're gonna use Auguste pizza for the, for the entree component of the lunch. What is, what is the consequence of that, I should say?
The biggest consequence would be when it comes to an administrative review, and they come in and they find that pizza is, needs a meal component requirement. So we have to, the crap part that has to be figured out, and the meat part that has to be, to eat. And we have to be able to account for that. So as long as we can, usually if we can do that somehow, we can work it out the rest of the year.
Wow.
Figure it all out. So that's, um, something that's gonna happen, but.
We should do is just get them regular.
Let me ask you on the easy side. So.
Like wheat, just, uh, like just take the wheat on the head. We serve them two grades.
On, on the, on, in the snack area, for example, okay? That's where they can get different things. French fries, cheese sticks. Maybe a happy compromise if you will, for the stadium pizzas. Maybe that's something we can look at. Have any answer for?
I just, I, I just, you know, stop for the.
No, I, I get it. Um, you know, there's no more meat roll-ups, there's no more potato bar. All the good stuff is gone. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I hope you avoid a tornado.
Thank you very much.
The cafeteria had a health inspection this past month, and both schools were at a clean inspection and no violations. Excellent.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Olvin. Uh, we'll move on to item, item four, administrator.
Mr. Redford, I just have one thing to, uh, with standing committees. Uh, the, uh, the IU four board met, uh, last month, and, uh, there was a strike authorization by the collective bargaining unit of the IU four. Uh, they haven't struck, but they did vote for a strike authorization. Uh, negotiations are still ongoing, uh, but that was the big highlight, what happened at that meeting last month. And, uh, as of now, they haven't struck. And, uh, Mr. Rich, what services do we currently use with the IU four? Nicole Fucru.
Um, vision and our, um, audiologist and email.
That's not much.
No. The ones that would be affected most would be our weekly vision, which I put that in an email I thought to you guys to answer Mr. Redford's question. Is there three off the top of my head at most students that would be affected? What, what was funny is Mr. Redford sent that email, and, um, I was just that Friday at the IU. No one said a word to us. So, you know, the other LEAs in the other counties, I had shared that with, and.
It was prior, it was, it was on March twenty-seventh, I believe, they voted, and they announced it at the twenty-eighth meeting, um, in person, that they had authorized, uh, strike authorization. So it was a quick, it, it was a quick turnaround when they did that. But as of now, they, they haven't said that they were gonna strike, but I do know that, uh, I believe they are going to be continuing with negotiations, and hopefully a resolution is, you know, is available at that time. As of now, there isn't, uh, from the last update that I've received, there is none.
Yeah, when I sent the email to Miss Bell, I was concerned it was gonna affect our speech, and I was gonna get phone calls, but we're good with that. So that was, we're good there.
And Mrs. Peter is wonderful. God, I don't know if anyone has heard anything, but she is the sweetest lady, so I'm so appreciative. I just wish she would've come forward the first time I asked her.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Sager.
Uh, this is my in-the-driver meeting, which, uh, lots of evacuation. Student behavior is on buses and covered. Lots of evacuations were completed on March third. We did it late this year because the weather wasn't cooperating. Trying to get the night to weather, I thought, I thought it was late. Um, just one of the things, what a great job my drivers are doing going on these trips. Uh, yesterday we had one in North Gate, one in Freedom, one in Central Valley, and two in Good Riverside, get back to new routes. And, uh, that's me jumping in there too, but that's four buses right there. And, uh, even last month, one Pittsburgh that had basketball game. You know, I drove a car down there and I got stuck with GPS even trying to move around in there with you guys. Didn't think nothing about it. I moved it in a bus down around there, and I very probably won't break it off right now. It's tricky down there. It's tricky around here even, but, you know. They do a good job.
Just to give you another pat on the back, I, I know a district that contracts their service, that's on their service. They're so hard for drivers that they're trying to coordinate, uh, spring events, and they could put two teams on one bus, drop a team off early here, go down there, drop that off, wait till that's over, come back, pick this one up. Well, they're, 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 another district, separate incident, is dropping students. They're, they're track kids, eat the last lunch, get on the bus, go to wherever, and they're actually at the opposition school before that school is out because they need to get back to do their runs. So we, we, we can't underestimate, nor can we overappreciate management. So, thank you.
Four buses, that's only half a fair bucket, really. So we're, even leased out so nobody can break down, let alone we got four scatter all over the country. And, uh, we'll have to work on routine, getting ready to, I think we're gonna box the summer retail already.
Any questions for Mr. Sager? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Novak.
Uh, we had a water leak on an elementary hot water storage tank, um, this past month. Um, we replaced four exhaust fans on the, uh, high school, throughout the hallway and the bathroom. Circulation pump was replaced for the, uh, elementary heating system, the, uh, actually kitchen, sorry. And, uh, we also, past weekend with the electrical, we have a contact in the back for parking light. It is on tank grade, it's not supposed to be set one at a time.
You say you repaired the hot water tank?
Uh, sometimes we have electrolysis, and, uh, we reroute through a proper pipe, through a proper pipe, you know, to finalize, spraying pretty good.
So you end up changing the whole tank, or?
Just the fittings that go on each end. I want an emergency warning for what it did to.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Novak? Mrs. Bell?
Um, in people services, we started a new, um, ticket help system, um, for staff at the elementary, um, just so that they have a resource to know that we're responding to their needs. Um, our response time is thirty-minute response time. I'm gonna go in competition with Mr. Lee every month to see if we can beat Mr. Lee's ticket. I was joking about that. Um, progress reports, um, for IEPs we mailed home, um, probably next week, at the most, two weeks. Our life skills at the high school, I just want to recognize what a great job they're doing with their coffee shop, their snack shop. They did something special for Easter, um, where they make a little Easter that people can purchase, um, little trinkets. They want to expand into a, like, a full school store. Um, so they're doing an awesome job in that, in that classroom.
Isn't that so important?
Because it teaches those students, um, real life skills and gets them out there in social interaction, spending money, the whole.
Does that count as reggae time when they're out on there?
Because they're out within the regular population. And it, it's part of the IEP is that community-based instruction, like if you ever hear CDI wording. So great things happening there. All of the modified state testing, um, for the, uh, lower students are completed, thanks to Mrs. Rich. Um, she was the lucky one this year and had to do all of that. We're looking at renewing our service contracts. Um, this month you'll see on the addenda is capable kids. Um, we're gonna go with them for our OT and PT again. Um, I'm really satisfied and, and happy with, um, that company. And next month, I'm looking right now, trying to negotiate with DePaul about their rates, but, um, next week, next month, we'll be hearing. Angela's social worker, um, they've started, they're running in both buildings at the high school. They currently have twenty-three girls, um, working on connecting families with services. And at the elementary, there's, um, been three reaches to Angela's social worker.
Any questions for Mrs. Bell? Thank you. Um, Mr. Swirbl.
Uh, so we, um, as we do every year, we bring up, uh, the elementary kids to watch a preview of the high school musical. Um, they should be brought grades three through six up to get to see live preview. It's nice for the kids to see that. Um, but they have to look forward to, they had spring pictures, um, we, our big show, our big spring show is our elementary, the Fine Arts Festival and Choral Concert. Um, so the choral, uh, grades four through six chorus performed, as well as the fourth grade reporters. We also, um, added a book fair this year, which was kind of nice because then the parents could shop with their kids. Um, it was packed the entire time. Um, it was nice, like a one-stop shop. Everybody, they're coming out one night, they can see their kids perform, they can see the artwork, and if they want to go to the book, book fair and buy a book. So we thought about adding, and I think it was a success this year. We did have a student qualify for the academic national games. Uh, Tricia Hauser, she's gonna participate in linguistics and propaganda at the end of the month. Um, she did qualify for other events, but those are the two she chose to compete in. Uh, we completed our, our final benchmark, uh, before the PSSAs, which are at the end of the month, and we had our final data meeting to look at that. Data looked good, uh, progressing very well. All of the grade levels are actually further ahead at a checkpoint than they were last year. Because that shows that we're closing the gap, we're getting closer to where we want to be. So lots of good stuff coming out of that. Um, and then one thing that we did this year that I know we haven't done in a long time was we did a McTeacher Night, and we actually set the income record for every participating McDonald's in all PA. I don't know if anybody went out there, but it wasn't even standing room only. There was nowhere to sit. We were running around, serving food. It was great. It was a fun time. Um, I think I saw almost everybody from Laurel there that night. They had a kidney elementary. Great, so. Um, we're excited that PTA was there, raised money, which is good because everything going up, field trip costs are going up. So nice for them to raise a little extra money.
Good. Any questions for Dan? Thank you. Like to welcome Mr. Lake to his first board meeting.
Well, thank you, everybody. Good evening. Thanks again for the opportunity you guys gave to me. Um, I started last Wednesday, it was my first day officially here in the high school when, uh, I had to deal with the hoax. So I had a first faculty meeting after school. A lot of the teachers were gonna say, what's this guy doing? First day faculty meeting, but that's something you have to deal with, obviously. Um, two things I jumped right in with, uh, meeting with the teachers. I think I'm through all but maybe a handful, uh, sit downs, trying to learn their schedule. Um, I truly believe, you know, the pulse of the high school is the master schedule. It tells you a lot of what goes on and what teachers do. That's one of the things that it's been a priority over the first week. Um, and then Mr. Rich has started for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Um, I met with Mr. Bertow, Mr. McColl, McCollum, um, and we're gonna have another meeting tomorrow, so we're working hard on that twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, master schedule. And then the second thing with, uh, PSA Keystone exams coming up, um, I started to look at data, and, uh, we've offered some remediation and tutoring sessions leading up to, uh, the PSA here at the end of the month in the Keystone exam. Very happy. Uh, been a good start, I thought. So thank you again.
I, I just have one thing to add. Uh, in regards to athletics, Coach Brian Cooper is getting inducted into Lawrence County Sports Hall of Fame, which is, which is pretty great news. And Matt Diner, I believe, another Laurel alum.
Okay, um, Mrs. Con, or, uh,
Uh, to piggyback off of Mr. Cooper, I think, uh, is it at least a point to be recognized at that dinner too?
Yes, yes. He's one of the athletes for the year.
So we had our musical, all in our, that was very successful, um, with their three nights. Uh, our quarter three. Uh, our quarter three, three, three it ended on um, on the twenty-eighth. The report card will be, will be emailed out on April eleventh. Um, currently going through our benchmark testing for PSSA. They just completed those um, in this past month. And Keystone are happening right now so that we can compare our data to see how we've done throughout the year. Um, the IU contacted the school and we hosted the connect challenge here. We had um, many school districts, our gym, um, the old gym, what they call, was completely packed with students. Um, I think it was about like thirty-five groups of five students. And um, it was teams of um, upper elementary, which we used fifth, sixth grade, and then also um, seventh, eighth grade. We did have a middle school team this year. Last year we did not. Um, so next year we're hoping to have an elementary and a middle school team come speak. Um, we hosted our um, blood drive. We had the hoax, so that added another layer, but we just stationed our school police officer down at that door and everything was fine. Middle school held their PSSA Olympics to kinda kick things off. Um, they like to do stuff for the fun at the end of each quarter, so this is what their focus was um, last Friday. And you might have seen in the paper, there is an article about our middle school band. Um, Mr. Boyer, our band director, has commissioned um, uh, through Stephen Harvey, he's a composer, um, to write a special piece just for our students. So they've been working on it. Um, they're very excited about it. Um, and it's called The Lost Kingdom, and they will perform it and they will play some at their concert.
Any questions for Mrs. Columbus? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lee?
Yeah, just a couple notes. Obviously well aware, there's been a lot of power outage. It's been that kind of breath havoc a little bit, so it's made it the last couple of weekends interesting. Um, we've done okay, but I really wanted to speak to, because one of the budgetary items that I have are battery backups. And uh, we did a lot of cutting, but that's something we really need um, for these type of situations. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We've had minimal outage, so we were able to get things up and running relatively quick. And the process took on a lot of summer planning now, getting our projects ready. And uh, I feel pretty good about our plans and what we are hoping to do to continue to refine and go through the refresh label. Couple notes on assessments. Mrs. Columbus and I, we're both former district assessment coordinators. We, we got together and really tried to refine a few things and go to more of a systems approach where we, where we can be universal and have some parallels between the elementary and the middle and high school. So I wanna thank Mr. Columbus. We've done, we did a lot to try to put some things in place. Cause there's a good chance we may be monitored for this year um, by the state. So I feel very confident, specifically in the area of test security, uh, which is a big one with them. I feel really confident about the, the things that we put together. So thank you, Mrs. Columbus, for that. Um, just the security update, I think last time I told you we finally got the, the controller part. That actually came on the day we had, we got notified that it came on the day we had the flying incident. So semi-ironic, but without them too, that'll allow us to have a, an alarm where eight doors are jarred throughout the high school. We don't have that, that in the elementary yet, there's plans. That's coming very, very soon. We, the, the tech literature, we were working on that today. Um, and I just wanna put a note out for cybersecurity. Uh, our staff's getting a little bit better. They're recognizing some things, but I'm trying to uh, trying to educate them. Mr. McGee spoke to you about Noobet before. I actually, I sent that information to uh, Mrs. Conrad. Um, that was something already built into our budget. I'm happy to say, I called the ref and asked him if he would give it to us for free for the rest of this year. At which he said, yes, I have a meeting tomorrow to kick that off. So that'll be covered at no cost to the district. Um, with the understanding, we will move forward in the future. Other than that, we had ninety-nine tickets. Our response time is three minutes, three hours and eight minutes. Um, we closed two days and two hours. So that's above the norm and the average and the standard, but it's nowhere as close as you. So I have any questions?
I have one question. So I was with a group of, of people with children and they brought up a concern that every student has, they get their passwords for their Chromebooks in the elementary school. And they bother is B B one, two, three, four, five. Mine might be B B one, two, three, four, five, six. So it's easy for kids to hack into other kids' accounts. Is that true, false? Is there a way to?
Potentially, yes. I mean, we do, and this is a system that we inherited with the nomenclature. It's um, a student ID with some other, with some other identifiers. Yeah, our kids are really smart to pick that up. One of my goals, and I haven't figured out the plan yet, a little more complicating the student. Um, specifically the elementary students and how we would approach that, uh, is to put some type of multi-factor authentication district wise. So some people are gonna be really frustrated, but we really need to do something along those lines to protect Laurel. To protect Laurel. Really important. So that's coming down the play. Um, when, when you guys see people complaining about multi-factor authentication, it's really an industry standard that we are several years behind on.
Well, even if we have to, I mean, we have to change our passwords every six months or four months, whatever it might be.
I would love to see that stat, in other words, but if you don't change passwords.
I mean, I know it's a shame, but.
That'll be fun.
But the slow burn, we're working towards that, but we're actually pretty, a place where we'll have to shift and we won't have an option. So that, that, that's coming.
And I will say what we've done with our primary grades is they actually have a QR code, so they don't even have to put a password in. So typical thing is, they can't change a password. And if they do, they're not gonna remember it. So we, I think moving more towards those QR codes.
School like, um, you know.
Those, those seem to work well, and I'd like to be primary teachers, like it's hard enough to get them logged in. I think I typed something in, but if they can just put it up in front of the camera, then they're in and we'll, I think it's a little bit more secure.
Yeah, a couple years into the elementary, I handled it, was a sister's, they stole someone's password to do something inappropriate on the computer. But we were able to catch them because of what computer they logged in from, um, what they did. So they are sneaky, can be.
They are, and they have motivation.
Oh, yeah, but they're still gonna get caught.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. That's what I'm saying. Like, we, we still caught them.
So you might as well be like, here's one password for them. I could dress on everything.
Yeah.
Right. I don't respond, I don't respond to anything. I've already been warned. Don't, don't respond. I did have one question about the electric when it goes out. The generator, does it just run the main parts of the school? I mean, it wouldn't run computers and everything.
One of the stuff we do have uh, through the generator for emergency power, not much. Uh, the generator is here, it does not run the water.
No, those are the two things I thought they would. Yeah, what, what, what specifically does it run?
Like.
Oh.
We do have the main, we do have the main distribution facility and our main server under battery back, or under battery backup and connected to the generator.
Okay.
Those, those, not back server.
Right. A generator, I mean, you can't use that electric on, okay, that's what I just thought.
Right. That was something Mr. Noobet did. I think you did that last year, right? That last year or before you connected up. Yeah. So we're in good shape there. All the outer layers stopping, so we have some challenges.
And then whenever you say on the cybersecurity thing for the door, doors, you say coming soon.
Well, that's access control.
Right, okay. So.
You said.
Coming soon.
Real soon.
Okay, give me a date.
I can't. Um, we're.
A month, a week?
Uh, we, we put the PO in for that controller. I went back and checked June, so last year. We just got it literally on Wednesday last week. So he was just here the last five days, there's a few things we need to do in regard to configuration. I want it done tomorrow. So he's coming back tomorrow. When I say soon.
Well, you should ask him tomorrow for a date.
Yep. Yeah, I'm just having, I was ecstatic to take the part.
Oh, no, getting a part is your first big hurdle.
But it will be done. That is, it's our highest priority, Mr. Lee.
That's an alarm to those who are bored or open, it's a lot.
I don't give a notification to our principals, to our SRO and, and or any other.
Layers out though?
Yeah. That's more so a note, someone's leaving it open, it's the last one in.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Lee? Mrs. Conrad?
Hi, I'm. Part of um, the PCTD brand that is awarded with art and so many. Um, finally got all that in place, most of the last size, um, the PCTD, two, five, I guess. Um, that's three weeks ago. So um, it's for two years and the annual more information, so it's depending on some, some, that's sort of case. And then Andrew's fundamental is PCTD, I think.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Conrad? Thank you. Mr. Rich?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, uh, information reports. Um, the only thing I wanted to comment on that was uh, the athletic committee did meet with uh, all the coaches for the sports and uh, I guess I could let Mr. Poot do that. But uh, I, I, everything went well. I think uh, we did try and stress to our coaches that we do support them. And if we have parents that are becoming issues, we need to be notified, the athletic director and uh, just let them know we, that, you know, we don't wanna lose any more coaches or any of that, so, that we are supporting them, so. Did you wanna add anything?
You know, I mean, we had that conversation about the green tickets. We had a conversation about that, about the kids, you know, riding the bus.
Oh, yeah.
Playing a bad person being in the house with that.
Right.
I don't know if we'll further get into that.
Right. Okay, um. Item five, any comments, questions from the floor relative to agenda items? Item six, next week we'll approve the minutes. Next week we will approve the treasures report. The investment report. Item eight, we will approve the bill listings. Uh, food service fund payments. Item nine is personnel. Uh, we have retirements, resignations. Um, I'm not gonna read all those. I'll give you a few minutes to look over.
Do we know if uh, I just have one question, Tim. Do we know if uh, Dawn and Susan are still gonna stay on for supplemental?
No, they're, they're retired, come on, right there.
And that's, oh, that's including?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I mean, the supplemental for like, musical director for Mr. Rogers. That's what I meant. Cause that doesn't specifically say that. It just says.
No, Mrs. Rin does, but I.
Rin is, yes, but he's keeping that for now. Okay.
Any questions on, anybody on item nine? Have we already started looking for another custodian?
Kinda sort of.
Another, what was that, Jim?
Another custodian?
We haven't, we haven't posted um, anything. Our plan is to, if you're gonna vote on Wednesday, we're gonna do posting an advertisement. Uh, basketball's already up. We're gonna do the other ones um, starting Thursday.
And school physicians, does that have to be a physician? Can it be a?
We don't have to do it.
Oh, okay.
So that, that's a relic from the past, so we're gonna accept this resignation and move on.
Perfect. Thanks. What did they do?
I don't know.
Okay.
They did physical.
Or sports physical.
Sports, physical.
Well, and actually, for years, I don't know about Elwood, but other places for years, they've not done the physical, they've got to do PCP.
Or a good urgent care.
Right. Urgent care is E C N, out twenty bucks a day.
Well, I just wanna make sure if that's the direction we're gonna go, we enforce. Just for long before.
Kenny's on it. We talked, we had some email discussion today. Kenny's on it. He's taking care of the applications.
Okay, item B, employment of elementary cafeteria server. Approve the employment of Jill Bennett as elementary cafeteria server. At rate of eleven twenty-five an hour, effective April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Mrs. Bennett has been a substitute in the cafeteria since January twenty twenty-three. Any questions on item B? Item C, transfer to the middle high position, the pizza station. Um, approve the transfer of Mrs. Michelle Swickert from middle high school cafeteria server to the middle high school pizza station, effective upon her return from leave. There is no change in rate to her pay eleven fifty an hour. Any questions on C? Item D, employment of cheerleading assistant coach. Uh, approve the employment of Melissa McEwen as assistant cheer coach for the twenty twenty-three school year on step one of the current CBA, subject to change as negotiated pending upon the required clearances and documents. Mrs. McEwen's salary will be one-third of the JV and junior high coach salaries combined for six thousand two hundred and fifty. And two thousand eighty-three thirty-three. Any questions on item D? Item E, employment of cheerleading assistant coach. Uh, approve the employment of Madison Jasminski as assistant cheer coach for the twenty twenty-three school year. Step one of the current contract, subject to change as negotiated, pending receipt of required clearances and documentation. Her salary will be one-third of the JV and junior high coach, which would be six thousand two hundred and fifty and two thousand eighty-three thirty-three. Any questions on item E? Item F, employment of cheerleading assistant coach, Hannan. Approve the appointment of Diane Hannan as assistant cheer coach for the twenty-three, twenty-three. Should I, okay. Twenty-four school year on step one of the current contract, subject to change as negotiated. I, I mean, it says subject to changes, because that's where, where in negotiations also it could change. Okay, that's what I. Pending receipt of required clearances and documentation. Her salary will be one-third of the JV and J, junior high coach, uh, twenty-six thousand, no, twenty-six, six thousand two hundred and fifty and two thousand eighty-three thirty-three. Any questions? Item G is temporary summer employment. Approve the appointment of Adriana Stellar as temporary summer help as needed for the bus garage and elementary custodian cleaning at her current hourly rate of ten dollars per hour from June third, twenty twenty-three through August twenty-third, twenty-three, twenty-three, for no more than forty hours per week. Any questions on item G? Item H, professional development workshops. Okay, approve the following professional development workshop programs. Any questions on item? Item I, additions to volunteer and non-instructural substitute listing for the twenty twenty-three school year. And I believe you have that attached list in your board docs. Any questions on I? Under committee, the whole resignation of a board member. Uh, Mr. Kirkwood?
Thank you, uh, Tim. Uh, yeah, I, I just had a couple, uh, just a, just a couple of things I'd like to say um, regarding uh, agenda item A, under committee of the whole. Uh, this is my last meeting as a school director for the Laurel School District, as I will be moving outside of the district. Uh, it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve this community for the past eleven and a half years on the school board. I've actually spent over a third of my entire life as a member of the board. Uh, I've served as president, vice president, PSBA representative, and as an MIU four board member during my tenure. I've had a lot of positive moments and I've met a lot of wonderful people through my time on here. And I've even made some friends along the way as well. It has not always been easy, but it has been a great journey. Laurel is a special community full of good, hardworking people. The school district is the hub of our three townships, Scott, Slippery Rock, and Hickory. People here are proud of our school, whether it's sports, musicals, the band, clubs, activities, and student achievement. This community supports its students and staff. In times of tragedy and adversity, this community always comes together and supports its fellow members and. In times of tragedy and adversity, this community always comes together and supports its fellow members in need. We do this because of who we are as a people and we do this because we are a family. I am thankful for all the hard work that has been done over the years to ensure this school remains, in my opinion, the best school in Lawrence County and one of the best throughout Pennsylvania. I thank the students, teachers, staff, and administrators for all their hard work in keeping the school district moving in the right direction. I'm thankful to this community for taking a chance on a twenty-one-year-old kid eleven and a half years ago. And I'm thankful they went on to elect that kid two more terms after that. Uh, Mr. Rich, thank you for your leadership over the years. You are an advocate for change and a supporter of striving to be the best in all we do here at Laurel. I appreciate you bringing a vision here that has kept the school district moving forward. I know it hasn't been easy at times, but I'm glad you are here to guide this district. This community is proud of the work you have done and I'm proud of the work you've accomplished here. The message encourages current Spartans and future Spartans to strive for greatness in all they do. Thank you again for everything, Lynn. To the administrative team, thank you for all your hard work over the years. To Jen Conrad, Rob Lee, Nicole Bell, Nicole Columbus, Dan Swartway, Joe Sager, and Ed Novad, thank you for all that you do. And Kirk, I know you just started. We haven't worked together, uh, but uh I wish you nothing but the best. I know you're going to do a great job. And uh, you know, you'll you'll love Laurel. Also, to the administrators and staff, past and present. Thank you for everything that you've done for this district and this includes Mark Frangial, Mary Kozic, Kevin Mahoney, Mike Kroll, Harold Dunn, and Sandra Heenan. Uh, Dr. Heenan was the superintendent for my first five years on the board and I'm thankful for her leadership during that time. She was always gracious and understanding and she was a passionate advocate for education in this school district. And she dedicated a lot of years of service to this district. Thank you, Sandy. Uh, to my colleagues, thank you for your service to this district. Tim, thank you for your leadership and for your, I believe, twenty-six years? With twenty-six, twenty-six years of service to this school district. You are an advocate for kids and their education and for this community. Lance, you are a fighter for Laurel and one of its biggest champions. Also a huge supporter for the kids in the community. I appreciate your passion for this school and your service. To Mike Parker, uh, you are an advocate for the taxpayer, the kids in the community. You tell it like it is and always give an honest response. Thank you for your service. Dave, thank you for running several years ago and serving this district. You are a great advocate for kids and their education here. Your service to this district expands beyond this boardroom as you coach several sports. And let me add, you're a winning coach to those teams. Thank you, Dave. Uh, Bobby, you are one of the nicest people I've ever met. Truly a nice man and a and a coach who has dedicated years of service to this district by coaching and through uh your service as a board member. Corey, thank you for your friendship, your service to Laurel, and your passion for always doing what you believe is right. Jeff, AKA The Hammer, thank you for all your guidance and friendship over the years. I I always know where you stand on an issue either, and we don't agree. You are always for the taxpayer and kids and you've done a great job on the LCCTC as our representative at the Joint Operating Committee. Jim, thank you for your service, your leadership, your guidance, and your friendship. You've been a stalwart, uh, advocate for good governance here at Laurel. You're for the kids and the community. Your leadership has helped guide this board at times and uh you always have great advice. Also, I'd like to thank my former colleagues, uh, Jim Eppinger, Cheryl McKee, Chris Donigan, Alan Carlson, Blaine Forbes, Steve Sicafus, Kevin Patterson, Earl Williams, and the late Dave Smith for all their years of service. As I leave here to begin a new journey, I'm optimistic about Laurel's future. We've done a lot of good here over the years. To the new members coming on in December and to the individual who will replace me until the term expires in December. I wish you all nothing but the best. I encourage you to work with your fellow school directors to support uh your administration staff and faculty and try to follow this guidance as Coach Lou Holtz once said, do the best you can and always show people you care. You do those things and you'll be fine. But I'd like to say thank you, everyone. It's been an honor of my life to serve this community as a board member over the years. I'm forever thankful that I've had this opportunity to serve Laurel. And as I leave here, uh, no matter where I go, I'll always be a Spartan. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kirkwood.
Little Ben.
Uh, my questions on item B. Uh, item C is uh item B, I guess, is appoint a new board member vacancy. Uh, just to give you a little bit of background, um, we talked about, um, you know, opening up a surgeon. We also have board member or people that are running for the board. We really didn't want to show a bias one way or the other by picking anybody that is running for the board at this time. In the past, we've always tried to look to a former board member, somebody that's got a little bit of experience. It is only a six-month term, so it really doesn't give you much time to learn anything. So we did contact some uh former board members. Uh, I got ahold of Mr. Carlson and to my surprise, he said yes. Um, Alan's always been a good board member. He's very dedicated. He's been doing this longer than I have. Uh, so um there there will be a motion to appoint him next Wednesday to fill in the seat. Any questions on item B? Uh, item C, spring athletics. Grant approval for the coaches, students, finalists, and teams in baseball, softball, track and field to participate in the twenty twenty-three, or in the, you know, twenty twenty-three WPIAL PIA championship finals should they qualify. Any questions on item C? Item D is textbook approval. Uh, approve the McGraw-Hill World History and Geography Modern Times Student Edition for the ninth grade world history for use beginning in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at an estimated cost of three thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents for classroom set of books, teachers, and six-year subscription bundle. Um, what is this subscription bundle?
So you got, you have digital options that they can pull from because we're only buying a classroom set.
Okay.
Mrs. Conrad sending us your library.
You can ask us online.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's why I was going to ask that we, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't lay eyes on it. I'm sh- I'm assuming there's nothing. Tim told you. Oh, you.
Oh, that's the one I took on last, okay, yeah. Yeah, it's, I mean, it starts at five hundred A.D. and I mean, it covers.
Felicity, that.
It, well. The thing is, well, and I had the teacher's edition, which has so much stuff in it. Uh, but I didn't see anything that rang alarm bells for anything that I thought was, you know.
I'd say the one we have to watch out the most for is civics, American history. That's where they can really start.
Greed.
Yeah, rewriting things a bit.
Right.
So this, so this is oral history.
Yes. Yeah, this was kind of cut and dry. It really didn't get into a lot of American-type politics.
Okay.
But, yeah, I did take it home and read.
That sucker.
Maybe I can give you the physics book to go home and read.
Hard pass, my friend.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions on item D? Item E is a Midwestern Intermediate Unit Intergovernmental Agreement. Uh, approve the twenty twenty, or the twenty-three, twenty-four intergovernmental agreement with IU for special education services. Anything we need to know about that, Mrs. Bell?
No, that's just um, they provide professional development. If we run a pension services, it's just sort of a contractor agreement that they're there to support us.
Okay, I guess my only question of it is, will it be valid after the strikes of?
Yeah. Mostly they won't go on strike. I don't know.
Uh, item F, capable kids agreement. Approve the attached agreement with capable kids for physical and occupational therapy services beginning July first through July thirtieth of, uh, July first of twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. In the uh do I, just a little bit about what?
So they provide occupational therapy and physical therapy services for all of our kids um who get in the district. And then also I utilize them for like the RTI services. So before you get an IEP like intervention level, they also consult with the teachers. Who are having struggle with something, they'll come in and consult, but.
So we tell them.
Yeah, and and I decided to do the three-year because they haven't raised the rate on me and I wanted to get locked in at a lower rate.
Yeah.
So, but they are opening an office here in uh Lawrence County. Previously, they're all housed in Hermitage, um, but they're opening a new office and expanding here in the Lawrence County because the other districts are starting to go with this company.
Right, okay, thank you. Uh, item G. Approve the attached transportation contract with the Portisville Christian School for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a rate of one hundred and thirty-eight dollars a day. Last year was one twenty-nine. Plus an excess excessive fuel rider cap of fifty percent of six dollars a gallon. In the event of a drastic diesel fuel price increase greater than six dollars a gallon, Laurel School District would be in reverse re-burst PCS for fifty percent of that amount. Any questions on item C? Uh, item H is ratify the attached agreement between Laurel School District and the Newcastle School of Trades for students who have completed the LSD Welding One course and would like to enroll in the Newcastle School of Trades Combination Welding Program. Any questions on item? Lynn, how many kids do we currently have that are interested in doing so?
None of our completers at this time, um, wrote, so that'd be relative to the seniors, but um, but I don't know who's taken in as far as freshmen, sophomores, and juniors and juniors. But it's a requirement that we have sustaining articulation agreements with our vocational program or our vocational program isn't approved by the state. So there's the the bene- the the benefit, if you will, that you're referencing. There's this, the practicality in what we have to do.
So is this because we currently don't have staff that can do?
No, this, so what this, what, uh, an articulation agreement, if you will, if they would choose to go to Newcastle School of Trades, you know, they give it a get-out feel free on some of what they have. So it, you know, it's not going to do whether it's Randy or Laura or or certain, so they can teach those skills when it prevents the duplication, teaching those skills in the post-secondary division is all it is.
Yeah. Item I, approve the renewal of agreement with nutrition group for the management of the district's food service program in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, year five of the, they're in the year five of five-year contract. Any questions on item I? Uh, there are a couple. I mean, we've had them bid before. Nutrition seems to dominate the field.
So every three years, you've got to put it out for competitive, five, sorry, five years, you've got to do competitive bid. So um, I'm familiar with nutrition. That's another company, I think Shinango does, but uh there is a competitive process every five years.
Um, item J, approve the dissolution of Laurel Trivia Club and transfer the remaining students' activity funds to the trivia club's account to the student council account at the end of the tw- twenty-three school year. Is there a reason that?
Yeah, the Laurel, the, that club was tied to the Lawrence County Historical Society Trivia Competition. So when the trivia competition went away, there's no point for the trivia club associated with that competition.
Okay. Um, any questions on item J? Item K, student teacher, approve the following student teacher for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Logan Green from Grove City College under Mr. Dobinspec for the spring twenty-four semester. Any questions on item K? Item.
I just want to make, I just want to make a general comment. The more I get to know, this kind of pains me, is the Westminster type. The more I get to know Grove City College's Department of Education, I like that product.
They do a nice job. Item L, disposal of assets. Uh, disposal of a reach-in freezer, cooler, salad bar, and breakfast cart uh via donations or sale. Right. Item M, medical trust rates. Um, recognize the twenty-three, twenty-four medical trust deposit rates as follows, effective seven one twenty-three. Individuals. Oh, I'll let you read them over. Need to read all that. Are there any questions on?
That five-point-one percent increase seems to be the standard, you know, and it's not as bad as it was last year with the almost eight percent. But five-point-one seems, you know, on par with most increases.
Do we know what the total percentage increase represents in total dollars to the district? Is that a fifty-thousand-dollar hit, hundred-thousand-dollar hit? Okay. Jen, actually, you can, as long as we know it by next week. Well, we're waiting on Jen. If you want to read over the field trips, because I'm not reading all that either.
It's that time of year.
Oh, quitter. I don't blame you. My eyes are getting tired. How much? Oh, hundred and eighteen K? Of new money. That, and the next one, Tim's going to add. Uh, item N is approval of the field trips. Are there any questions on, is the thing on item N? Item O is award the replacement of the nineteen ninety-seven section of the middle high school roof. We uh, we interviewed some companies the other night. I I think we're down to two. Uh, we do have some follow-up questions with the two that, they're very, very close in price. We just want to verify a few of the questions, so we will have a name for that uh Wednesday night. Rough cost was?
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred, plus or minus thirty K?
Right.
Yeah.
Pretty much. Some of that could be impacted um by how much uh wet.
Right.
Right. It's a guaranteed nine hundred.
Well, no, that's, and that's why I said, that's the way Jen just gave us. Now it's a million dollars of money.
New money.
So, and if you've been up on that roof lately, I mean, it's, uh, we have pictures of the roof. You can see where the, it it's almost, it looks like the old-style mineral paper, but it's not. But all the stones are washed off into one side. I mean, you've got places on that gym roof and the four-hundred wing where it's just black. You know, all the stones are washed over to the side in puddles. It is coming up on thirty years. Uh. Okay, and and what we were looking at uh this time was instead of this type of material, it's a two layers of rubber membrane and then you go hard hot tar and gravel on top of that. Um, and we have, with the two that we're looking at. Um, and we have, with the two that we're looking at, we're looking at a thirty-two-year warranty. So, you know, hopefully, thirty-two years, I mean, it goes by, I remember when we built them buildings. I can't believe the roofs are bad already. So, I won't be here, but some of you may be in thirty years, you'll be looking at that roof again, but. Somebody's like.
Now, it's looking, yeah, that he's gonna be, right?
No, I'm, I'm, uh, but anyhow, is there any questions on the, we should have them answered. Next couple of days, we'll talk to these guys. Uh, are there any comments, questions from the board relative to non-agenda items?
I have one.
Yep.
The adult basketball program, is there a chance that we can reinvigorate that? I, my son's one of the people that was coming every week, and he said it was a really nice group of alumni that were coming, and they enjoyed it, so is there a reason that has to end?
No, I, let me meet with, uh, Ice Glider Internet and we'll get back to you. I don't know what pressures are on that facility.
Okay.
I usually don't start from nine at night, but.
I think it was like seven-thirty or eight.
Yeah, I thought it might have been.
Yeah.
Nine, usually nine at night, 'cause all the, all the students are usually on this floor.
It was Wednesday night, yeah, but like Jordan Dantico and Caroline Dantico, Adam, Mason Maras, they were all.
All the troublemakers.
Yeah.
All, all the good ones.
Yeah, so, I said I'd ask.
Uh, two things I really done, one, I wanna, uh, thank the Ag Department. I had numerous people either stop in or shoot me a Facebook message. They really enjoyed the toy show, they, uh.
I enjoyed the most tractor up front.
Yeah, I, no, I hadn't, I wasn't even, I was in Nashville. Actually, like, we're gonna take your stuff up there, I was like, well, I'm no position to say no. So, but, um, and I even had a, a couple friends from Bu- Butler County bring their kids up for pedal pulls and stuff like that, so.
That, that event, I gave the biggest heat out of that.
Yeah, so they, they, that was well done.
Where's Nicholas?
And then the other was, is, um, I know we're beating our heads in here with, uh, diagnostics and stuff, but I'd like to see at the elementary, especially after PSSA's, that little bit of purgatory before they get out. If we could get some cursive writing going, um, just, just, I don't, I don't experience it much, but every time I come in the house, as infrequent as that is, I'll hear my, my wife and her friends, I've just noticed this conversation happening, the, the kids don't know cursive, you know what I mean? And I get it, because cursive isn't tested, you know, and, you know, we're just a victim of the, of the process, but I think there's a lot of everyday application, you know, and I don't, you know, and I think.
Signature.
Skill that once you get to high schools, assume, well, you either know it, or we don't have time to teach them how, moving on, so.
They, they do do that in second grade, they teach it.
They, they do it throughout the year. I think what happens is, is, once they get beyond that, well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, they get, so, yeah, they get that quick fire in second grade, but like I said, I don't wanna say that the school year after PSSA's irrelevant, but I know there is a big sigh among the collective educators and educated that, you know, it's almost like a mutiny, trust me, I, I witnessed it, um.
Remember when we were in elementary school and they'd send it away, and it was like?
Yeah, they'd get it graded, and I couldn't even see my letters, 'cause it was so marked up with the lady trashing me.
Me too.
I remember that well. Terrible, God, it was bad.
I know, I think it's a good thing, Lance, I think it should.
No, it's just an idea, I get it, second grade, but I mean, hell, all of our historical documents and everything are in cursive. I mean, our, our kids are, I just, I, I think if there's, if there's any room in the curriculum for, in any grade level to supplement that, I, I think we'd be well-served to, to put them out into society that, if they could write a sentence in cursive, I think they'd be far beyond a lot of kids in the county, I, I promise you.
Well, especially when you're reading historical documents, I mean, you, you're, I mean, it's hard enough reading the Constitution the way it's written, written, but if you can't understand the way the letters are, I mean, it's even worse.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think it's part of our culture, I think it's important.
Mhm.
That's it.
Yeah, I don't know, the case of the spelling, the, the Glenn and Brady were down at the elementary. I forget, the fifth grade, like, spelling words had to be written in cursive, and, they learned it in second grade, and. You don't get to be losing.
Right.
The only thing I had for the board was, I think it would be important for us to review the criteria for somebody admitting their kids to the district. I think it needs to be more rigorous than the, the current structure in regards to whether you're a renter or you're an owner, what's the criteria, right? Today, currently, it's what, like a, some form of a bill?
Approved for.
Residency?
When they enroll, prove for, what, what?
Proof of residency, so they have to have either a, their driver's license if it has that address, or renter, or lease, or something from a utility company with their name stating they're at that address.
I would almost.
One or multiple.
We, we only require one at this point.
Yeah, I'd like to see us require something more substantive, like, I don't know, did you pay taxes? If you're a renter, a letter from the individual they're leasing from or renting from with their ID stating that this person lives at this address.
So, policy two hundred is your enrollment policy.
Yep.
I can forward that out to the board, and if you wanna make suggestions to it, I would say make suggestions to it, and then we put it to the solicitor, and there you go.
Yeah.
Is there a verification process?
They have to get, they have to get it notarized, we have to have verification from the person that they're saying.
Enrollment, not for homeless.
Yeah, there's no.
No, no, I'm not, yeah, I mean, homeless is a slippery slope, I'm just saying, abuse of enrollment.
We've been trying to really crack down on that, but I feel like our issue is then they say that the double.
We still might, we still might improve it, prove that you live with that person, get it notarized, if, if.
We're still getting reimbursement for them?
Yeah.
I mean.
Still go to our E M. R. account.
Okay.
I don't know how to make, uh, board policy PDF out of board document view. Or how about we just print one out?
Save it, save it to P D. M.
I just hit print, I'm printing the PDF, and I'll send it to the board. Thank you. Want two hundred, is there anything else you want? Oh, just two hundred, I'll hold this to them.
And just some safety for your service.
Oh, thank you, Corey.
And the twenty-one-year-old, that's a lot to take on.
I got it, I see that.
Thanks, it was a good, it was a good run. Very, very great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pittsburgh area, the Rock Hills. My commute's gonna be worth the help. So, see, so they're supposed to leave them about ten minutes during the day, and we actually have, um, open. A bar system that's very quick that they can put on, and that actually barricades the door. Actually, just, I actually just reviewed that with my staff, I'm just questioning. I'm not that far from home, that's a good. Or see you later on, goodbye. Their, their doors are locked, um, they, they may or may not be shut, shut depending on, but I always come to keep them, to keep them locked so that they can pull them shut quickly if locked.
I can see most of them are open today.
Locked, so, that's pretty scary.
Okay.
Depending on who's teaching in the hallway and how much their voice carries, they might be shut, so.
Okay, any other questions?
I just wanted to say thank you, everybody, it's been an honor, it's been a pleasure, uh, I really love my service. Uh, it's been an honor serving with everybody here. I know, but I, I'm just saying again, I know, but thank you, thank you, that's all, yeah.
Meeting is a chart, I thank you, everybody.